So I was working on the compiler last night and I was actually recording and I came across this bug and said I'd fix it later. So now I'm looking at it again. Let me show you the bug. I have a type. In this case, I've called the type test and I'm in this namespace bar and I want to use test and it's defined somewhere else. It's defined down here, but it's defined somewhere else and I try to use it and then I go to write this function and it says the type isn't found. I actually have realized what's causing this and what's causing this is when I say use foo core test, there's actually two symbols that would get used if things were working correctly. There's a type and a namespace and the stuff in the namespace has stuff related to the type. And by default, if I know about both of them, then when you say use test, I'm going to add both of those to scopes. So there's like a type name, there's like two namespaces, there's like one for namespaces and one for types. So I would add both and that would work, but if I don't yet know about this type because of the order of compilation, then it doesn't work. So this is pretty easily fixed because if I move this down here and then save, you see it does work. So I learned that this was an order issue. Now that things were in different files when I encountered it. So it took a little bit of untangling to realize that's what's going on. So I already have a bit of a complex system for resolving uses where I don't assume that I've already compiled the thing being used. And I sort of will come back to it later. And so we sort of just sort of need to make this use case work. And I started trying to fix it earlier today and I think I made a big mess and I realized I might know a better way to do it. And the way I'm thinking of doing it is to make a pass through, you know, every single namespace and declare every type, don't even look at the right-hand sides, just declare the names. What this will do is mean that I don't need to have done the uses yet because just declaring the names can't possibly depend on the uses. That should be right. Yeah, because even even if I'm declaring a generic, then you know, we're not going to worry about this part. That would sort of count as part of the right-hand side in a way. So just the names. And then once I've done the names, I'll do all of the uses. So this is essentially adding a phase, adding a pass to the compiler. But it'll be a really fast lightweight pass because we're only going to look at these uses, which aren't super common. So hopefully that makes sense and then I can just crank this out. So I'm going to ignore the mess I've made. I made, well, I might as well share my attempt. My attempt was that if I resolve something to be a namespace instead of a namespace and a type and the thing hasn't been fully done by this pass yet, basically if I got to this use before I got to the thing that's being used, then I say come back later, essentially say, don't, don't assume it's just a namespace. Just say, I don't know what this is and come back later. And I think this approach would work too. But it makes things a bit more complicated. I had to add a bit of state to namespaces to say like, oh, you know, how, how done is it? Which I don't love. So this might still be the approach, but I'm thinking I can just leave this here and then we'll revert it all if we fix it without doing this. So the, the plan instead is actually going to be to add a phase. So we have declare types. And so, you know, we're going to recurce down through every namespace and we're going to do some work on the definitions inside it. In this case, we're doing uses and type definitions at the same, in the same pass. Now anytime that you're doing two things together in the same pass, those things are going to be order dependent as like the user has written the code, if that makes sense. So it's actually kind of logical that if I want these to be order independent, then I also have to not do these at the same time. It's going to be as simple as, boom, I'm not going to do uses. In this phase, I'm going to do namespaces recursively. I'm going to do abilities insofar as they define a type, a kind of type and then type definitions. That's fine. And then we're going to need a function to declare or resolve uses in namespace. Okay, for now, I'm just going to paste in the code that I lost that I kind of want. And we can at least, we can think about copying this signature. I have this skip definitions thing that I might need to preserve. So this is kind of going to be our starting point. It could be a type of result of unit probably. And that's kind of where we are. And of course, this is happening inside of a loop. This will probably go away. We need to get to the parse definitions. Most of these would take a parsed. Most of my stuff actually takes a parsed namespace, so I might do it that way. Well, let's just copy this for now to get to the parse definitions. All we're doing is sort of, right, we grab the, the actual namespace, then we go get to the, to the parsed version and then we go look at its definitions. And now we're going to walk them and well, I need the body of the four as well. Need this or the the creation of it. Alright, and then we're here. And we're just doing that. And I don't think that skip definitions can ever be uses. I'm not even sure. I don't remember why I added the skips. Like who? Okay, there's no skips there. Ah, the pre-nname space, right. Okay. That's probably not worth its weight, but all good. I know for a fact that uses are never the pre-nname space, so that's fine. We don't need skip definitions. Alright, and so let me just give this a look. It looks good. So now we'll go to declare types, which we already fixed, phase two, which was declare types in namespace. We're going to go ahead and just okay, 2.5 experimental. Is all uses. And this is the function we wrote. Wow. It um it did a really good job looking up the namespace ID. Everything else takes a parsed and this is worse. So let's just take a parsed as well. The usual thing we would do is do that from the parsed to get to the non-parsed one. namespace scope ID, parsed use ID. So I do need that. Ah, this really isn't much better. Parse namespace ID definitions. Didn't really get much better, but it's easier to call now and it's more consistent. So that's fine. None of this is important. Why isn't this working? There we go. Just the module root parse namespace, please. Yeah. Oh wow, and Copilot knows that that doesn't fit. Right? And some of this code might be dead because this now returns. So yeah, we would have reported errors already and then we're actually returning okay. So this thing's never going to return error. Yeah, that's right, actually. So I can actually get a little bit more grown up here. Kind of reflect how I, how these have evolved over time. Just because you may encounter lots of errors and you do want to continue, really, I've had to move to the system of reporting them, adding them to the error list and continuing rather than like just this function failed, right? Because then you just, you really only ever get the first error and then we just check if there are any errors. So you know, even this one, like I'm suspicious if declare types in namespace ever is actually failing. So here it returns okay. None of these use question mark. If it did, it would signal some sort of internal error. Still haven't seen a question mark yet. I see reporting an error. Right? Um, there's also another way to check if this thing ever returns an error and it's to do this, obviously. Right? Uh huh. Yeah, so return, return? Right, and then you also then it's fine. And then we don't have to do that because this thing reports its own errors. Makes sense? Because right? So all I have to do is call. Make sure I recurce and that's fine. This thing reports its own errors. I'll put the semicolon here just in case. If anyone else, yeah, so now there's just like no need to do this. And then we do check of errors, right? That's, that's what we've been moving towards anyway. We'll just go ahead and do it here. Give it a name. Actually, the name, the name adds like no value here. That's fine. Failed. The user of the language doesn't care about the phases, but I have them. So that's fine for now, I guess. What do we think? We have no errors here. Hmm, resolve uses. And then at which one do I say if I have any? There's a point. Unresolved uses. Yeah. I feel like though. Ah, now there are there are uses that are block statements as well. So maybe I'll leave this here. But we could consider doing this somewhere further up. Um, this does also. Make a back. Could use, it could use scratch space. Okay. Let's run it. Is this font big enough? It's like probably any bigger is really hard for me, guys. I gotta be honest. I don't know how, I don't know how the streamers do it. Okay. Yep, it's still busted from the thing I tried, so I'll come back later. I do want to save this. Okay, so how do I save this? Trying to make my new stuff not run? I don't even know why it's causing that issue, by the way. Yeah. And I didn't, I didn't change anything in source, I don't think. Maybe I'm just completely forgetting something. Find usable symbol. False. If we don't find it, that's fine. I didn't touch find usable symbol. Is there any early returning here? Was I doing something better? No, find usable symbol. It gets inserted. So unclear. Right? Really just here? Use bug. Yep, this is the bug I'm currently working. I just wanted to not lose track of it. Maybe this thing. I don't need this anymore anyway, because I stopped doing the recursive thing. Or the, the like on-demand. My plan originally, instead of come back later, was just to on-demand compile the module that's being used. But that always results in like a possibly deep stack. You, you get a stack as deep as the user's code is out of order and I just didn't really, didn't really want that either. Okay, cool. So we are redefining types. Okay. Resolve uses. Seems good. Do you recurce? No. Uh huh. I'm calling the wrong thing. So what I need to do is write a, a version that recurses down into namespaces and will resolve the uses in it. So that'll, that'll be an easy change, but that's not exactly the error. I wouldn't necessarily expect to be getting these two. Declare types in. This is recursive. It's not doing uses anymore. Type. Type int kind exists. Type. Right? So why would you be running twice now? Hmm. I did do this bug fix, but I don't think it's this. Let me just revert it to be sure. No, good. This hasn't changed. It just doesn't do uses. This is new. And it's not doing enough. That's okay. My code that would actually evaluate the type definitions again if all turned off. Add use binding never. Yeah, add type. I wouldn't say type exists. Yeah, that's totally different. So what I'm doing is I'm just stepping through all of my changes. So 2 of 15. I was doing uses here. I'm not anymore. If I were, whoops. If I were to restore it, I don't think that's going to fix this, but if it does, then that's a smoking gun. Yep, no, the types are still getting redefined. Type exists. So this is running. NameSpace ID. Okay, maybe I'm doing something silly. Declare types in parsed namespace. Ah. No, that's that's right. Module root parse namespace. That hasn't changed. Unless I did have like a short circuit that I got rid of. No. Nope, not that. I'm about ready to start logging what we're doing, right? Find out who's calling this. That'll do it. Okay. So we're going to do this. De-log the function name. Log the argument. This is our first line of defense. Ready? Something crazy. So what would we expect to see? Here we go. Core compiler. These are all inside core, by the way. Types. So all of the ones inside core. Types. Boom. Types, types. Okay. Uh, so it's all of the namespaces. I know what it is. Okay, NS types, NS types. I declared twice, but these are two different parsed namespaces. I think I'm getting, they're getting, they're getting mixed up. So when we walk all of the namespaces in core and this is, we're inside core here. We, we get to this one and then I think we go and look up the wrong parsed namespace. Because it probably exactly because of the change I made to that function to take this thing to take a namespace ID. Yep, instead of a parsed. Yes, because then declare in parsed, but that just does the mapping. The problem, this mapping, because I just saw, you just saw, I let you declare the namespace twice and then you can add stuff to it. So this from the parsed to a namespace is one of those, but if you try and go the other way, it's lossy, right? I'm trying to go from this to the parsed and I'm going to the wrong one because like it's a last writer wins sort of thing. So declare types in namespace has to go bye-bye. Um, or it's just always in parsed, basically. And then this is a parsed namespace, something the user typed, the way to think about it, typed. Typed namespace or namespace ID would be like my more abstract, the language semantic version of a namespace. And whenever a type in here says parsed, it means like something in the source code, right? So in this case, because NS blah, NS blah is written twice, it's like there's two parsed namespaces. But there's only one namespace ID, right? There's only one core, even though that's namespace ID, but here that means the user typed NS core or in this case NS types twice. So let's fix it. And we can just do this. The best thing to do is blow this up. So from a parsed, we can get to the real one. Which is the hash mappings. Right, remember we established this way is safe because like, I'm, you know, for any of the one, the three parsed ones, I'm going to go, this is going to get me the one real namespace ID. I think it's needed. What is NS even used for? We're getting the name, we're getting its scope and that's like it. Just kind of tragic that that's all we need it for, but that's what we do. Use the mappings. And then you're recursing on parse. So really the problem was just yeah, that one lookup. But I wasn't. Okay. So I broke it. I broke it with something else. Let's go look at our declare, ooh, declare types for this run. Core compiler types meta buffer view mem k1 types compiler sys pointer bool array blah, blah, blah. You notice we saw types twice and we're back to arena again. And eventually we should see, we should be done? Now we're logging uses because we're trying to fix a bug with uses. And we should get to standard hash map thread p thread. And then there's arena, type arena not found. Okay. Handling unfulfilled use core slash arena. Okay. So let's go into standard. Okay, the fact that we got through core is really good though. So we're in thread. And type arena not found. So this use should have certainly run before this function signature gets checked. So the question is why? Declare types in namespace. We logged that. Let's log this one too. And then we can log. This won't be as bad because we can be closer. We'll resolve all the uses in std. Ah, but it doesn't recurce. So it's literally because our use isn't being run. So that's, uh, that's perfect. Because, so resolve uses in namespace. Uh, recursive. I was starting to do that. Okay. Uh, recursively. Let's write English. We're going to do namespace. So maybe you're seeing the data model here. Definitions can be namespaces. Namespaces contain a list of definitions, which can be namespaces. And then if they're not namespaces, it's all of the useful things. So, uh, the parse ID. The other things that uh, there's somewhere I say what are definitions, but uh, type definition, ability, ability, impl. These things are all definitions. Obviously the expressions, type expressions are not. This is not, that is. So these are kind of the things that are not namespaces that can have value in here. Okay. Let's do that again. Oh, it worked. Right? Wow, so that fix of that extra pass, which we could time, by the way, it's going to be like a microsecond. I'm not going to bother timing it. Yeah, and that added like no complexity. Adding that pass, it actually makes this path, makes it simpler to think about. Uh, I'm getting to the point where I'm not really wanting uh, I'm not really wanting to name or to number and name all of these passes. They're really passes. Okay. Well, let's clean up. So how do we clean up after, after going on a tear like that? Well, we're going to look at the diff. we're gonna look at the diff. And I think I'm gonna have the diff. I need a better workflow for this. Alright, I'll, I'll, I'll try and edit from here, so. Let's, let's do this. Let's go to the original use case here, so list dot k1, I'll just go ahead and do. And the whole goal here was to use them slash alloc mode, and then in here. And then slash alloc mode can just be replaced with alloc mode. G for multiple lines, C for confirmation. Confirm, I don't wanna do that one, cuz that's my use, and then yes, I do want this one, yes, 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 yes. We save that. It doesn't work, because this LSP server is using, uh, hasn't been rebuilt, so it's not using the latest compiler. So let's make sure that it did work. Okay, it did. So now let's go back into lazy git again. And yeah, working on that file. Um, I ended up not using this, but I don't really see the harm in adding this function. So I'll add it. This this I can rip all of this stuff out, which is, as you can see, good. You'd rather not add this. And then this is my test. We commit this, so really just need to go into, um, yeah, these lines of typer. I can actually do this. This was a debug. Actually, I did, I did make some improvements here. The thing we don't want is any of this. Why are you double? Am I crazy? Shouldn't it be like this? Right? Ah, that's kind of weird. That was my note to myself. I hate this, like, why can't this be done, like? I hate, I hate Rust format. I wanna stop using it, and I want something that just removes trailing white space. And I don't know, maybe that's just, maybe that's all I want. Alright, so now we can go back to our, uh. Alright, so we have a no commit here, return and see if unused. Let's go ahead and do this, um, support. More out of order uses. And that's fine, and let's go look at that. That one, not that one, not that one, but this one. I wouldn't expect any of these to get used now. But maybe this is gonna say that all. Okay, unresolved use, unresolved, okay. Are these? Oh. Maybe it's, if they're still unresolved by the time we get here? We do it for bodies? Uh, I don't. Oh, okay. Leave that alone, cuz we have the no commit, but. Now we definitely still, do still get unresolved ones. So here's an example. Why? I don't know. Alright, so these are all, these are happening in bodies. What? Oh my gosh. Cuz it's got. Think of what? Parse use ID used steps. Right, inserting unresolved use. So, so what I wanna do is just understand when I'm inserting unresolved ones, still. Because what I'm thinking is now that I moved it into this other phase where I do every type, and only then do I do uses. What, um, what is there left to be unresolved when I do the uses? Clearly. Well. Find useful. First use the target, is it, is it an ident? Yeah. So this is gonna be queue identity string. Alright, so I just I wanna know. Ah, functions, actually. Okay. So here's something that's the source of a lot of complexity here. I want the program to just say use foo, and if it's a function, it works, and if it's a namespace, it works, if it's an ability, it works, if it's a global, it works. And that means that these uses actually kind of have types, but I don't know what they are until they resolve. So what's happening here is I just have to assume now that they're trying to use a function. Whereas before I changed the phases, I was basically saying, either they're using something I haven't evaluated yet, or it's a function. So it's kind of nice that it's a little bit reduced, but it looks like the unresolved uses are two functions, yeah. So I'm really okay with that, um. Yep, and then that means that I should do the rest of them, well, what are the rest of the things, right? So find usable symbol. So we haven't done functions yet in phase two. We ha, we know it's not types, we haven't done globals. And, uh, this is old name before I knew what these were. Um. It should probably even be a global ID. That's okay. Okay. Or an ability, which is part of type phase. So yeah, that means it's a function. Cool. So I still need this, because I don't know if you're trying to use a function until I've resolved, and if I miss, I just have to assume it's gonna be a function, and it's gonna work later when I do the body phase. Really? Sorry, this one, this is all definition bodies. So this is when we do function bodies. Um. It means that if the use comes after the function body, it's not gonna work. So should it be its own phase again? Probably. Let's confirm that. Let's do, let's get back to simple, so what we're talking about is, actually, hey, let's do something fun. K1 reload. This is supposed to rebuild the LSP and reload it. It's probably not gonna work. And I have it doing a release build as well, so we might be here for a couple of seconds. How are y'all doing tonight? I'm having fun. I'm glad I fixed this. Ooh. It worked. Okay. Let's use a function. Alright, let's use core types type of. Let's do it inside of do it. So what am I talking about? Use core types type of. Sorry. That's not a thing. Ready? Oh. We got a crash. And what if I used it before? It crashes again. Hmm. Oh. Okay, well, let's take the schema of any other type then. Alright, this works. Oh, and that works. Why? Is it cuz type ID just works, period? No? What gives? Because I'm walking in a bar. I'm walking in a bar, and I'm doing all the bodies. Which means I'm going to reach this function, and then I'm gonna reach that use. Oh. It's because, haha, okay, so hang on. So unresolved uses of functions. It's not all functions that gets used, it's, that get used. It's only functions um, from your current module. Because remember, I compile, we compile all of core, and then all of standard, and then the program. So all of core has been compiled, so this use is gonna work great. So it's only if I have my own function before returns unit. Okay. And it's inside of ns secret as you do. And I wanna call before. But of course I can't. So let's use secret before. It works. Here, does not work. So I, yeah, I'm understanding everything perfectly at this point. Let's make it work. Let's make this the last thing. So we're just gonna say, um, uses recursively before bodies. Before bodies. Functions, globals, abilities, um, so functions will have been declared. Yep, and now that functions are declared. Another pass from resolved uses. Oh. Let's just do this then. And let's not do it this way. Let's do this. Alright, I'm gonna have a borrow. Alright. I'm gonna do it this way instead. I'm gonna push this to scratch memory. Push in iter. So this will make make a slice from an iterator. What? And slice. For unresolved use in self temp. Get in. We, what are we doing? We are side skirting the borrow checker and and avoiding, and avoiding, um, memory allocations. Oh, we already had one. Hmm. Oh. I have to run it in its proper scope. So like, might be better. If I put the scopes on the unresolved, and what I'm trying to do is just iterate this really tight set of unresolved ones, instead of having to walk the whole, like, namespace tree again. I think it's worth the work. Just real quick here, cuz I only make it in one place, scope ID, it's right here. All I need. Yep. To evaluate a use. So that means that can't do this anymore. I need status and ID. And I need to dereference both of them. Kill me now. It just doesn't feel good, okay, to write, and that's why we're writing our. We're writing our own language. That's not really why. Okay, we now have the thing we wanted. Uh, oh, 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 if it's resolved, so what I can do. Let's just do one filter map and it'll be better. Okay? So what does that mean? So it means just gonna write a little function here and we're going to match. Oh, shoot. ID status. I'm gonna match on status. Status. Unresolved. And this is why, okay, this battle is why I write fewer and fewer. Iterator style, you could say like functional. Um, style rust and more and more imperative for loops because they just don't scale. Like you always end up munging around the structure so much and God forbid if I wanted to do to return in here. From in here with an error from the function. It's just. It just doesn't survive change. The code doesn't survive change very well at all when you write it in iterator style. Alright, so this is gonna be ID and the scope ID and it needs to be a sum because we're doing a filter map and it's. This guy and then use. Status resolved. We don't care about you. We want none. And then what happens? That's. That's our iterator now. And. De reference you. Scope ID and unresolved use. Yes, okay, and. You can't error, actually. What it would do is it's gonna insert the latest status. So we'll do it this way. Oh. Traverse namespace chain can fail. Okay, that does make sense, actually. This time through it can't. But um, traverse namespace chain. That would be like. If the path doesn't exist, that is an error. Right? But what we could just do is push the error. Hmm. And then it won't be, but then it won't be resolved or unresolved. Alright, we'll keep it this way. Okay. Alright. Oh, I actually, okay. I know that it can't fail on that particular part here because it already succeeded once. And that's how we got an unresolved use in the first place and didn't have an error up to phase four. So we're just, we're just gonna do it that way. And then we're going to get the status. So this is just gonna be. If it never resolves. And there's your error. Oh, yeah, get once a pointer anyway. Okay. Okay. So this should work now. And it does. Which means that now when we do bodies. Uses should be done. So that shouldn't be needed. Users are all resolved by now. That feels good. Doesn't it? Alright, and let's make sure secret be, oh, wait. One thing that's really nice about the LSP is that I can now test like nine different. Like regression tests nine different failure things instead of having to commit a bunch of tests for them or like, you know. Um, at least save and rebuild. So we'll do a couple scenarios where the function name doesn't exist or the namespace doesn't exist or you know, that sort of thing. Um, using a global, make sure we can do that. So secret before, but secret before. Before. And it should say secret doesn't exist for has def. Yep, that's also working. And before we can use it for, we can use it after. It doesn't matter. We can declare the function after. And we can use secret before, after we use it. Boom. So it's like triple out of order. Oh, yes. I figured it out, so you don't have to. Let's. Uh, let's see what we have to commit. That's done. That's fixed. Inserting resolved use. We can stop doing that. I'll do. Okay. So there's a mode here that's like going by hunk. What was it? I guess it's just hunk selection modes now the default for staging. Yes, cool. A. Yep. It's always been this way. And what I want to do. Is test the editing. Key bindings. So let me get to the print line. Wow, wow, that's very. Very readable. It might even be my fault. I feel like I do have one custom thing. And lazy get for highlighting to work around something that was really unreadable in the left panel. Shit, um. Yeah, very much a failed experiment here to use this. So let's just. Let's instead go through. Yeah, let's just change you back to a debug and you to a debug. You can be a debug too. You can be a debug. Oh, are you new? No, you're not new. Oh, yeah, you guys can be debugs too. Okay. Can we run all our tests? Man, an hour. But I fixed like three things I didn't expect to fix. Oh, man. Yep. Everything passes. Our no commits are really just future things. Nothing to do with what we just did. It feels really nice. So this would be uh. The use fixes. Uh. Add. Final use resolution after function declaration. How about that? That's a good bit better. Alright, we fixed it. So now. All these out of order uses work. You can use types that have namespaces even if they haven't run yet. Good stuff. Thanks for watching.